Village owned, there's no and in that sentence. There's two separate sections. Section D refers to what the village has determined to be D nine.
It's D nine, but I mean, section D is just one, it's not just about the village.
Right, but the section that the trustees have to set does is talk about that. It just says what the spaces are, it doesn't say village owned, that's what you have to do.
No, but it does say off street.
So for years we've been this, and I consider off street parking where the cars aren't blocking the streets. So you have parking spaces on Piermont Avenue right out front that are specifically striped, and they're off the street. When the car's parking them properly, they do not obstruct the flow of traffic. And they're owned by the village, they're maintained by the village, they're plowed and cleaned, they're striped by the village. So personally made, I think they should be included in the off street parking. I think it's semantics in the language, the way somebody wrote it, that they just wrote it wrong stating it that way. I think they meant that, you know, because those are village owned parking spaces. So when you get to, if you want to take the language, village owned parking spaces, then you have to include them. But then if you want to take the language off street parking, then you don't include them. So you gotta decide where we end up on this.
Right, what I'm saying is the statute isn't saying village owned and street, off street, it doesn't say that. If it was an and, then I agree with you, but it doesn't say that. It says this special section for what the village has to determine that you have to determine.
Yeah.
And then there's what you have to say as the entire file up for the village, which includes off street and village owned, you know, village owned. They don't necessarily, it doesn't say that in the code, that it's and.
Well, look, it does say that they have to be off street. And I would say that it's clear the legislative intent when we established this being a parking law was that we assumed that our existing businesses and uses were using the off street parking already. This was an effort to create a way that a business that doesn't have any off street parking because of the nature of the building and the lot that they're on could be able to operate a business that required off street parking in our village property. So it was clear at the time that it was adopted that we shouldn't be counting the off street parking spots, we should be counting.
Well, they get adjusted according to what businesses come in and out of them.
They're not supposed to.
And when you lose a business, then somebody else fills in the spot. Well, if you're putting a set number on it every year, that's the way it works, and that's, that's the way it's always been done. There's a set number that's set.
We haven't been operating that way for the last few years. So yet you're supposed to every year.
We always put a number to it, and we've always kept it below the number that the board put on it.
That's simply incorrect, respectfully. Every time a business has come in and said, we need feeless parking spots to open up on District 96 when they came in for their permit, we increased the inventory of available spots to accommodate.
And that was done on not only my recommendation, but they had the parking authority, everybody else looking at all that stuff and set numbers.
Wait, the same way I said in the, I think the point is, and I think it's not about the off street as much as it is about the village owned. I mean, wanna change, what is that, changing the wording for the code?
I'm just removing that phrase from the document.
Right.
As to what Charlie has to say. All I'm saying is, you three, it's more than that. It doesn't, it doesn't say village, it doesn't have to say off street and village owned, it doesn't say that. You guys can say protection.
So what's my concern, so you understand it, is that it has been expressed by existing businesses in town that their customers don't have enough access to parking. And increasing the number of feeless parking spots available doesn't have to change the number of parking spots that exist. So we've got people right now, they're paying for feeless parking, that feel like they're getting rid of all because there aren't any specific spots assigned for them. And that's at this number of eighty-two that we currently have assigned them. If we expand it all the way up to one hundred and fifty-eight, I mean, I think it would be legitimate for us to edit the code to give it as village owned, and then say, we're gonna count lots of spots available in lot B and the spots available in lot X. Those are not village owned, but they are in lot S, those are new, they're already, we didn't use to have those available.
Right.
So I think it's reasonable enough to say, let's count for those spots, but let's clean up the code so it doesn't have to count them. And just to clarify, the two different numbers, we're supposed to, by the beginning of the year, establish what the village's inventory is, and Charlie is supposed to determine when that inventory has been expended by being allocated aggressively. So it's not, look, to Charlie determining the number of available.
But that's why the parking authority got involved, based on stepping in to be an outside and local people setting that number.
I don't know when the, when this file up, did we tell on the code, but they filed?
It was twenty-ten.
Two thousand and ten.
And we.
It was amended, twenty-eleven was amended.
Amendment to twenty-eleven, and by twenty-fourteen, the board at that time already was not saying, following their own code, setting the number every year.
I'd like to try to do what we're supposed to be doing, even if it hasn't been done in the past. And I just, the point, the overall point is just that the number as we have it right now, I think already is negatively impacting businesses that are paying for those spots. And expanding the number.
But changing the code isn't gonna change that?
No, but it'll mean that we're following the code. And if one of the people that feels like they're not getting what they're paying for wants to take action against us, they can't just throw a code in our face and say, you're not even following your rules.
Well, that's subject to interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, those are expensive interpretations.
Yeah, I would say, I would say that if you want to set the number, again, you're not the only village, you know, not places that represent, you're not the only village that, you know, that doesn't set their file up every year. You should, but a lot of places do not, so.
Okay.
And they do it, sometimes when a development comes in, that's when they reassess it, and that is definitely fine. But as to the number, I think we have enough in the code now that you can set, the board chooses to set it by then, we make that change to the code just to get rid of that section.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, all occasion, we try and, Hudson Terrace Transportation Committee. So I think the reality that has been discussed is that whatever the number is, it's not expanding the capacity of parking spaces in the community. If you just looked at village owned, off street, we've already given away more file up spaces than that inventory allows. The real question that's a judgment call is when is it too much for the capacity of downtown? And that's worthwhile discussion. If we go by the law that there's plenty of spaces available to grant, but it kind of begs the question of when are we feeling like enough as a number? And so I think the two can be separated. You could approve a number today, but I still think it is a topic for discussion of what do we feel the real capacity is, and do we grant any more restaurants for example? So our recommendation is based on the guidance that we got, that obviously it's not expanding the number of spaces in the community, and we are somewhat subject to the legitimate criticism of there being, the restaurants are paying, but there's no guarantees that people are actually getting a spot. So I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. I think, well, I think the only thing that we have, during a mending fee in the parking, is it would create an opportunity for the businesses to come and weigh in on what their experience is and what they, you know, need from us essentially in order to continue to be successful. And like, they, nobody's here representing the restaurant this evening, and if we make a decision like this, it's gonna impact them. So it just seemed to me like, I would prefer this back to the schedule of hearing and an agenda item that is to discuss amending the fee in the parking code prior to adopting a number.
The, are we talking about the term village owned?
Well, we can have that discussion. Off street in and of itself is restricted. This, the initial numbers that we're looking at, one hundred and seventy-three included off street parking. So I would prefer also to get rid of the village owned part of things if we're gonna be using spots that are not village owned. But I, I think that the businesses deserve to be involved in that conversation.
Yeah, I, I think that we're getting too deep into the woods here on this. I mean, I'm willing to pursue the future to get, if businesses want to get involved in this, but I do think that we should set this number.
So can I ask you, the last time on the agenda, the review request for a thirty-eight million special parking application for a lot of the month, is that also going to need feeless parking cells?
I have no idea.
They have to submit anything, so we're gonna just have to meet back another agenda.
Yeah, but we're tableing that for later.
Supposedly, the back lot that's paved now is going to the restaurant if they open there, the bakery, that's what the landlord was telling me. And they might take a couple of spots from the village, but they'll have mine in the back there that they can use supposedly. That was supposed to be the deal. Cause I warned them, and I warned the landlord, hey, look, parking's tight down here, you know, if you open a bakery, they don't have a place to park, they're not stopping, you're not walking, you know, if you walk a quarter mile to a restaurant, it's still okay, you're sitting there for an hour and a half. But if you run into a bakery for a cup of coffee and a scotch or something, you're not gonna park a half mile away and walk there and get it and walk back. So he agreed to give them the parking and we give the building. So we'll see what happens. That's where it is.
Thank you.
So if we want to set, you want to say, what was that, section, I mean?
Uh, well, this amending chapter two tends only specifically, uh, yes, D.
Right.
So if you want, if you want the recipe to change that language and remove village owned, D nine, that is true. But again, don't get that code here. We do, we can, it's not, I'm saying as to the number you want to set, again, I think you have, you build a set of that. If you want the right means to change that language, prepare law and law, we can do that, but again, the number that's different, I think it's not that, that code.
Well, the other interesting thing is that we're required to do it before the first of January. It's always before the first, some January. So is there a next year's fee in the parking?
Usually it's done at reorganization, we do it, so, and you can change that, cause again, another place to work in this is different. The fee lot, the ones that are illegitimate, they do it at reorganization, they say. And you can change the language of that to say, we think we, we assess the fee lot whenever reorganization, we can change the law, we can do that as well.
It's an improvement that we've been voting on the number, considering what we've got in over ten years, eleven years.
But meanwhile, in the last five or six years, we have increased the number of fee in the parking spots that we're issuing.
So let's make that happen. I make a motion to accept the total off street, village owned and private parking for fee lot at one fifty-eight. Somebody want to second that?
Okay. It seems like we keep putting a hand in on this topic. Maybe it's some way out of the discussion to try and maybe type of.
I don't even know what to, what, get your, what do you, you know?
Make a motion.
Just schedule a public hearing.
Yes.
You can't schedule a public hearing unless you have the draft line.
It is.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so how about, should I put in for category eleven possible, draft law?
You need to do mail because it's.
Okay, so then you need mark eleven, it'll go like this.
Yeah.
All right.
Item number seven, request from Empire Homes, one seventy-fifth anniversary committee to hold a five key round in the village on Saturday, May tenth.
Yes, thank you, Ray from Sko, volunteer member of the Piermont Fire Department. As you know, our one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary is in twenty twenty-six. Of what we've decided to do, as a part of the celebration, as a give back to the greater fire and EMS community, is to create a five K run and walk in Piermont. And the way it will be structured is that Empire Homes company will run it, organize and plan it, and it will be open to all volunteer fire and volunteer EMS organizations as a charity partner to come in and use it as a platform to raise money. So it's not just raising money for Empire Homes as part of the give back to our mutual aid community members, we're offering it for them to come and use the event platform, the peer-to-peer fundraising platform to raise some money. So for the first year, we wanted to do it in twenty twenty-five to sort of get our legs underneath of us and see how it runs. It basically, the course basically runs the same as the old McHugh five K course. I've met with Chief Hurley and discussed the overall footprint and the course and wayfinding and other things, and he thinks it's completely doable. On the list that I gave you, the rough outline for the day would be set up starting at six AM. The final runners would come in and awards would be around ten fifteen, and with cleanup would probably be around twelve noon that would be done. I believe we spoke to the landowner of Flywheel Park, and he's in agreement that we can use it. The date we're proposing is May tenth, and moving forward, we would like to continue this event annually on the second Saturday in May. So in the first year, we've already spoken to the Spark Hill Fire Department, South Orange Town Ambulance Corps, and Nyack Fire Department, and they would like to be charity partners for our first year. And we're excited to offer this to our fellow mutual aid organizations. As you know, fundraising is challenging for a whole volunteer organization, trying to maintain fire EMS calls as well as trying to raise money is tricky. So we think this will be something that will be very valuable to the greater community, and we think it'd be you, the nominal footprint, and a lovely day here in Piermont. So it would happen early in the morning, we have a very, a relatively clean footprint, the roads would be back open by about ten twenty, so it would be a short time and certain roads would be closed, and we think it's completely manageable. So we're open to any questions or ideas you have, happy to discuss it further. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you, brilliant effect.
Thank you for the feedback. Well, you know, like I said about, it's been about a lot of enthusiasm, to be quite honest. So I think it would be something very valuable long-term for the greater community of the all volunteer fire and EMS organizations throughout the county and lower Hudson Valley. So we think it would be something special for Piermont.
I make a motion to approve the Piermont Fire five K on May tenth, you said?
Yes.
May tenth.
I'll say may tenth.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I have another value in continuation of discussion regarding a legal ban on gas power leaf blowers in the village of Piermont. After sort of discussions with board members regarding this, I believe that it is the opinion of this board that we are not ready to institute a ban this year. Mostly because of enforcement issues. We can't wrap our heads around enforcement issues. The state is working on this, this is something that we can look at again early next year to see about next year, but this board is not ready to institute that ban. I, I will open it up for public comment if you like, but this is something that we considered very heavily, and at this point, especially considering that the state is ready, is working on a ban itself, we'll look at it again next year and see if maybe the state is ready to institute that. I will take public comment though, so Martha, if you want to come up, state your name and address.
My name is Dr. Martha Shulman, five twenty-two Gears Street, Piermont, New York. I've been living in Piermont for thirty-two years now. I am really disappointed because I think it is a, frankly, a lack of political courage. Let me get, first of all, we all know that gas leaf blowers are the most primitive engines on the planet. One, compared to an average car, an hour of gas leaf blower emits five hundred times as many hydrocarbons, fifty times as much particulate matter, twenty-six times as much carbon dioxide. And just as importantly, they operate, they create a noise at a frequency that has been shown to be extremely detrimental to both mental and physical health. It's not the level, it's not the decibel level, it's the frequency. They have been banned to whatever, to either partial or full degrees all over Westchester, and in Nyack and Upper Nyack. Let me speak about enforcement, that is just, that shocks me. I've lived in this town for thirty-three, thirty-two years. We have very, very high taxes in Piermont, and one reason we have them is because we have our own police force. It has come up for discussion many times that we should merge with Orange Town, save a lot of money, lower taxes, and I've been one of the people who's spoken up and said, oh, but we love having our own police, we're so safe, everything's so wonderful. We should be able to enforce basic quality of life issues. We are not a crime-ridden, I don't know, Newburgh, they're not busy solving murders. This is a quality of life issue, and it is not difficult to enforce. First of all, as in Upper Nyack, they find the homeowner, not the landscapers. I might add that these things are extremely detrimental to the health of the workers as well as the health of the residents. This is really the resistance of the industry to make the investment in either electric blowers or other forms of dealing with, these are used for frivolous purposes, really. So we don't have to break our leaves or mulch our, our leaves or leave our trappings on the grass, I mean, forbid we allow nature to fertilize the soil. I mean, what is this BS? And why do we have to suffer this poor quality of life? People now are home more than ever since the pandemic, they work from home, they homeschool their kids, they do Zoom meetings, the sound of those blowers is infernal, it is worse. Yes, it is bad in condos, and I wonder how much of it is that the condos just don't want to get a landscaper who will actually think forward. There are landscapers in Connecticut who have got a hundred percent electric, okay? It is not impossible, it is totally possible. However, aside from that, it's worse for people living on a street where a different neighbor has a landscaper every day blasting this infernal sound and these infernal fumes at them for no good reason at all. This is twenty twenty-four, these things should have been bad thirty years ago. It is shocking to me that Piermont, which I used to, I'm the one that used to say Piermont's an environmental leader, and I used to say it because we were smart enough not to use pesticides on our grass as opposed to New Jersey and whatever. But I no longer say that.
Thank you.
It's been quoted a lot by some of our former trustees, I no longer say that. I think it's a cowardly decision.
Martha Shulman, two-two-nine Hudson Terrace. Today I found out that the city of White Plains has a complete ban on gas blowers. They have the resources of the larger city to have hired three people to be in charge of, if they get complaints, that I would call it, it will be enforced, and they encourage their citizens to call a phone number, yep, to call a phone number. And, well, it's not ratting your neighbor out, it's the landscapers or your neighbor, I imagine. And I agree with Martha, that in twenty twenty-four, these are things we should be considering for the environment, or twenty twenty-five, for the environment and for our neighbors, for our children, for, this is, it's crazy to put this to rest and not have other considerations. And I have one other comment, and this is a political comment. If we are looking to the state, and the state is going to create a law around this, I think we should get to our elected officials, encourage them to support the law as a, as a board, as a village board, I think we can do it as individuals, and also to encourage them to provide funding for enforcement of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as the person who proposed the ban, I'm absolutely in shock of this decision, and I would ask you to elaborate on why it's not enforceable, given that we have, on chapter one thirty-four, there is a noise ordinance to the city. You're saying that that is not enforceable either?
They have, that is enforceable, that has nothing to do with this.
Oh, wow. If we can enforce it, we can enforce it.
I just think you all have written this as bad stuff, you know, that electric leaf blowers are the way to go, I have one myself.
Now, why?
But the enforcement of it, I could see a neighbor blowing in his yard with an electric leaf blower, and his other neighbor comes up and says, you've got a gas blower. And all of a sudden, there's a conflict, and all Chief Hurley decides, and what we're trying to do is get a little bit more time to, excuse me, we're just trying to hear a little more time to do this the right way.
Well, what time is gonna get you? The neighbor is gonna all of a sudden wake up and say, oh, that's actual electrical? You're assuming that the labor is gonna, you know, lie about something, and now you think it's one year's time that changed? No, let, let, let me finish. There is no reason why this cannot be enforced. Mayor, give me one reason, trustees, give me the reason why. Because please, as was pointed out, we have, we have to trust and we have citizens that will do the right thing and not just for sake of fun, you know, try to impede people from doing what is the right. I, and, and it was proposed to be a phase out, nobody's saying ban it right away. And it's been done all over the state. Piermont, we pay our taxes, I, I forgot, I live at, at, at two seventy-seven Fulton Avenue, Hall River, I pay a lot of taxes in this town too, as some of the people, and I can see my, my taxes all the time work here. I mean, it's, we, we should be able to enforce things that are law. We don't do law because we can enforce. I mean, if there is a reason why to do it, which was pointed out several times.
So White Plains hire three enforcement people, should we hire someone just to enforce?
No, they'll get your police to do it.
They're not busy.
They're not busy.
We're paying for aid, but we need some love.
Yes, we need to enforce any law that you put in the books. You're not gonna put the law in the books because you think like they can't, are you not trusting your police? Or you're not trusting, well, no, no, you're squaring your responsibility as trustees to, for the well-being of, of the city. Hunting it for another year and waiting for the state, if the state approves, what are you gonna do?
What's that?
If the state approves, then what are you gonna do?
I guess we'll have to hire a person for it, and then your taxes are gonna go up again, so.
Excuse me.
No, 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 you can have, you have your chance.
No, 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 you, you, we will have another year of discussion about the budget of the town, but this is ridiculous, you can't enforce something, all of a sudden you want to decide what law you're forcing off because, oh, well, I, you know, don't know, it's, it's put in the books and we'll see how it works. If it doesn't work, then you take it out, but wait another year for what?
Exactly.
What did it want?
For another mayor or another, because at what last democratic?
Excuse me.
We should, we should, we should.
I, go ahead. I also want to reply. I just want to make a, a statement that my wife and I drive Tassels, I have solar panels on my roof, I cleared the snow yesterday with an electric snow blower, I have an electric leaf blower. So again, it's not about what the advantage is of having electric leaf blowers, it's a question of enforcement, people calling, ratting on neighbors, I mean. Window?
Collect fines.
Collect fines.
Yeah, that's what we do, I have a gun, twenty-five mile an hour. We collect fines, that's what we do.
What's that? Oh, oh, yeah.
Stephen Peña, one twenty-six, um, I appreciate you guys taking the time to think about this enforcement. As a Latino, I understand and I see that most landscapers are Latino. And to send the police over what is, in my opinion, a low-level crime at the moment can cause a lot of trauma, a lot of. can cause a lot of trauma, a lot of legal mess and drama that is not necessarily needed. There are market implications here as well. I have a house cleaner. I ask the house cleaner to use environmentally friendly items. That's the house cleaner I choose. The homeowners in this community can also choose to pick landscapers that can use electric items. The market can also correct itself. But the enforcement, you gotta really think about it, guys. Because you can say it's on the homeowner, but the police are going at the contractors first. And when they, when your neighbors are calling on the contractors, it's the contractors they talk to. The people who look like me.
But it's the workers who suffer the most.
And when they get, and then when they get harassed by the police, same thing.
Do they live in Piermont? We are here to protect the citizens of Piermont.
I've heard it.
Forever. If they're not living in Piermont, why, you know, I'm Latino, too.
Actually, Lex is such a kind of a person.
I was just, I was just wondering, is there a way you could do it without enforcing it? Like, could you start as a voluntary or educational campaign or something like that? Where you start it somehow when there's not the enforcement component yet? And I always think of recycling, you know, recycling is technically the law. It's not enforced, and yet most people recycle. And like, I would never rat out my neighbor for not recycling. You know, so maybe there's some way that you can kind of bring in without the enforcement piece?
Lee?
Neandravask was 25 Hester Street. I was going to say something similar to Alexis's comment. Usually the blowing part is the end of the road, you know, in, in a service. And so by the time the police might get there, people are gone. And I don't want the people who have been hired to be punished. It should really be on the homeowner. And I think that the education piece, the ask, is maybe what can be done this year? And say, next year, we're really hoping to have a ban, and we'd love to ask people voluntarily to lean towards a cleaner, greener way to maintain your property. And so maybe there can be education, sort of dissemination of that, you know, the benefits of it. And so that, that's what I would ask. I mean, I don't use powered equipment, and I have very little property maintenance, but it is annoying and it's unhealthy, but at the same time, it's a, it's a, it's an educational piece for the homeowner, to the point that you made, Bruce, like, you're driving electric vehicles, you have, it's a choice that you make. And so as homeowner, you can save your maintenance person.
Just affect your neighbors.
But they, but the neighbors are the one who are paying for the service, so get the service that you want. And just say, leave the leaves. And maybe your TPW, for example, I know a lot of my neighbors have no idea that they can get the lawn bags from the TPW, and they're buying lawn bags from Loews. I see the Loews bags. So people don't know the scope of the services that are available, and perhaps an alternative. A lot of people have come from the city, so they think this is the suburbs, and that's how things are done. Maybe it's just the educational piece of saying there's more than one way to do it.
Well, that's why they often start with a seasonal ban to sort of work on.
Well, that's why I said, do that, do that this year. Like, this year is the information piece.
A seasonal ban may allow the spring to fall.
Item number 10, we should request a 30-day waiver and structural permit application for property bought history, let's see, located in 474 Piermont Avenue, dispossessed of occupancy, any, any sort of application for anything. If you even get a, if you even submit a 30-day.
There's no plans, no intention. I had a meeting with them, and I explained to them that they can get me a seating chart and all the proper stuff, and they have to order it in.
Right.
And the three-day waiver test regarding the.
Wait a minute.
It is, it's a, you don't want to do that this year. I have questions.
Yeah, so I did what, whatever.
We'll just move back to the reader's list.
Yeah. Okay, before, we, Chair, I have a statement that I would like to make, and before I save the hearing, it's really been bothering a lot of people. So I want to give you this statement. One day in early August, I received a call from trustee Wright. He told me that a resident approached him and asked if the village was broke, because he had read an article online written by John Torming that the village had lost over $8 million since Tucker had become mayor. I assured him that the village was in great financial shape and told him that Nate Mitchell had made that claim three years earlier when he was running against me for mayor, which was debunked at that time. I thought it was quite an coincidence. Fast forward a month later, after the developers' foil debate, they brought the tax cut in 2020, 2024, Nate and Bob Zid. Nate had posted a link to a Facebook post, excuse me, Bob Zid asked, what's that? Nate said, it's a link to a Bruce post from 2021 announcing a tax cut for election season, saying fund balance highest level it's ever been, while that position is minus 6.5 million. I'll skip some of this other stuff, but Nate said, actually, maybe 5.7, if you don't get the order before it's almost a year after the close of the fiscal year. So in 2021, April, we had only seen 2020 order minus 5.7, not minus 5.7 million, which had been pointed out at the last meeting was totally false. It was the fact that the Gatsby reporting in the state had changed in 2019. It had nothing to do with the financial condition of the village. But what really upset me was the following. He said, he sends to Bob Zid, I sent it to Torming, and then he gets decided over it. So first of all, back in 2021, he's explaining to Nate that the change in the Gatsby reporting by both the village auditor as well as former trustee Mark Blunt was. Why would he bring this up again three years later? What's worse, he tells Bob Zid that he sent it to Torming, not some guy named Torming, which would indicate that Nate and Bob Zid already had a relationship with John Torming on July 20th. This guy who does not live in Piermont, yet harasses and posts inappropriate pictures of village employees, village volunteers. Yet apparently trustee Mitchell was working with John Torming way before the tax of July As, you know, again, I, I just don't, I don't understand. As a trustee, his fiduciary responsibility was to protect the village of Piermont and its residents. Instead, he's participating with a guy who is harassing village employees, harassing village volunteers, writes an article about how I lost, I lost the village $8 million to the point that people were calling on Facebook for my resignation. And yet he's participating with this guy. Who does that? What, what kind of, what kind of, this is not up for discussion. Who, 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 who does? I don't understand.
The investigation was closed.
And I think he owes me, I think he owes this village a big apology, which other residents have called for, and he still refuses to admit. So I just wanted to get that statement out there.
Why is the attorney not here?
He had to leave to go to another meeting, and I would just like to respond by asking when you are going to Bruce, the foil request.
Can you bring the microphone, please?
I'd just like to respond by asking Bruce when he's going to be productive with the foil request that we're five months ago.
I believe, also that's another thing. So then after trustee Mitchell, he goes to the developers, according to his records, he convinces a friend of his to come in and, I don't know, and file a foil report, 24 foil reports, or maybe 26, of all my emails for seven years, not strictly relating to that, to the development, narrow to that, but all, the seven years of emails and texts to department, to, to, to the clerks, to department heads, to some business owners here, seven years worth. Well, it's costing this village money for the lawyers to put these foils together. It was an extensive search. I believe at this point, 22 have been delivered of the 26 or so, and I think there's four more still waiting, but they got them. They got, I think, they got, excuse me, they got 22, I know there's at least four, or maybe, maybe up to six more still, I don't know. This, this was just strictly harassment, but.
Not in my place. Just for the record, you need to hear that it was my friend who I asked to do that. That was a solicited action by a resident. What is that?
Right, right. I'm not saying it's not within his rights to request seven years of emails, but not even just to narrow the scope to that development, which is really what this is all about. And the fact that people, some people in this room accuse me of taking money from these developers, which is really what this is still about, and that's why when it comes to any emails I have with those developers and texts, it's going to come back, no records found, because I do not have their emails. I don't have their phone numbers. I don't discuss any, I never had a conversation with them, except when it was done through the building department or through our attorneys. And I made it very clear why I wanted that development, and that was to keep your taxes down. I made that extremely clear, but for people to insinuate that I'm getting paid by these Shame, shame. I put seven years so far into this job, and this is how I get thanked. I make $12,000 a year in this position. I'm working in the office almost every day, and this is how I get treated after seven years of my life devoted to this village. I'm not saying you can't argue with me or have a different opinion. What I am saying is that everybody has, can have, has a voice, and all they have to do was just come and ask me. But instead, you go on Facebook and you spew stuff. People, people were here at the meeting with, with financial, and they left here, asked, I asked three times, any questions, any questions? And they left here and went straight to Facebook and said the same shit that they were saying before they got meeting. What the hell is wrong? What is wrong with people? You get a keyboard and you, you think you're a friggin' warrior, but you sit here at the meeting and people wouldn't even ask a question about the finances. Sick, makes me sick. Can I get a motion to adjourn? So, leave a second there? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much.